Good morning, councillors, and county manager and deputy county manager Leslie. Good morning, everyone. For the record, Oliver O'Jako. And I will be just providing a quick introduction. And then I will turn this over to Jenna Kaye, who is our environmental planner, very vast with the bill that recently passed the legislation. So let's go to the next slide, please. So councillors, this is an overview of our presentation this morning. It's not really a presentation. It's an overview of the recent bill that the legislature passed this year. It's known as E2SHB 1181. And we will also briefly discuss the funding and the guidance that Department of Commerce will be providing. And then we'll give example of climate change plan that other counties and cities have developed. And then we'll discuss our timeline. The thing about this bill, councillors, is that it has been in the making for several years. And finally, this year, it passed the legislature. So as one of the 2025 adopters, Clark County is required to have a chapter in our land use comp plan relating to climate change and resilience plan. So with that, I am here. And I know that PA's office are here too, to help us answer questions that councillors may have. So with that, let me turn it over to Jenna Kaye. Jenna?
Thank you and good morning. For the record, my name is Jenna Kaye with Community Planning. And as Oliver noticed, noted already, that today's work session is really about providing a briefing on this new legislation that not only relates to some new requirements that the county has to do for climate change planning, but we also want to talk about how this new legislation intersects with the rest of the 2025 Comprehensive Plan update that you all know we are working on. So on May 3rd...
And Jenna, I would just ask for my benefit to slow down a bit because alls I hear is an echo. And I really would encourage staff, especially on important issues like this, to actually intend in person, at least for the council members in person. Because it's just the communication gap and echo. And I mean, this is, it's really hard for me. So I just ask that you slow down a little bit. So I, because I want to hear everything you have to say.
Okay, I will do my best, but please chime in if I start to speed up. So on May 3rd of 2023, the governor signed into law E2SHB 1181. And this legislation takes effect on July 23rd, 2023. The bill itself is 50 pages long. We encourage you to take a look at it if you want to get into the details. But today's presentation is aimed at summarizing some of the main components of this new legislation. So this slide shows all of the goals of the Growth Management Act, or GMA, as you know. And as you may recall, the goals do not have any priority order. The new legislation adds climate change and resiliency as a new Growth Management Act goal. And under this new goal, comprehensive plans, development regulations, and regional plans must support state greenhouse gas reduction goals and per capita vehicle miles traveled goals, and foster resiliency to climate impacts and natural hazards, among some other requirements. The legislation also amends the GMA goals related to transportation, open space and recreation, and early and continuous public participation. So for instance, with these other goals for transportation, language has been amended to encourage efficient multimodal transportation systems that will reduce greenhouse gas emissions and per capita vehicles mile, vehicle miles traveled. And in the open space and recreation goal, there's now new language on retaining green space and enhancing fish and wildlife habitat. And then in this citizen participation and coordination goal, it now requires encouraging the participation of vulnerable populations and overburdened communities in the planning process. So we've shared this slide in previous presentations on the Comprehensive Plan. And this list shows the required elements of the Growth Management Act, as well as some optional elements included in the county's plan. We've updated the slide so that it now shows climate as a required element. And we've highlighted all of the elements of the Comprehensive Plan where this legislation has added or amended language on requirements for these elements. So just at a glance, you can see how this bill is cutting across a lot of topics and a lot of different pieces of the Comprehensive Plan. So digging into the legislation a little bit more, the Clark County is now required to include a climate element. And this element includes two sub-elements. So the legislation adds a greenhouse gas emissions reduction sub-element. This component is mandatory for 11 counties and their cities, and the cities within those counties that have populations of at least 6,000 people. And the resilience sub-element is mandatory for all jurisdictions that fully plan under the Growth Management Act. So both of these sub-elements have become required sections for Clark County. And as you know, Clark County has its Comprehensive Plan update due June 30th, 2025. And we are on the same schedule with Skagit, Thurston, and Watcom Counties. And will be the first round of jurisdictions that are required to include the climate element as part of our Comprehensive Plan periodic updates. The greenhouse gas reduction sub-element has to be designed to result in the reductions in overall local greenhouse gas emissions. You may also hear the term mitigation when referring to the sub-element as it's a common term that often is used to describe actions taken to reduce or eliminate the emissions of greenhouse gases, both present and future, in order to reduce the rate and extent of climate change damage. And emissions mitigation is different from the term mitigation when it's used for hazard mitigation and in other instances. So in this case, we're just talking about mitigation in terms of reducing or eliminating local greenhouse gases. And when we say greenhouse gases, we're talking about gases such as carbon dioxide, methane, nitrous oxide, and certain synthetic chemicals that trap some of the earth's outgoing energy and thus retain heat in the atmosphere. This greenhouse gas reduction sub-element requires the county to identify actions it will take during the 20-year planning cycle to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled related to transportation and land use. And this has to be done without increased greenhouse gas emissions elsewhere in the state. And it must prioritize reductions that benefit overburdened communities to maximize co-benefits of reduced air pollution and environmental justice. So next, let's talk about the resilience sub-element. Climate resilience is the ongoing process of anticipating, preparing for, and adapting to changes in climate and minimizing negative impacts to our natural systems, infrastructure, and communities. Existing commerce guidance materials suggest thinking about resilience as a community's capacity to bounce back from hazards exacerbated by climate change, such as more frequent wildfires, more frequent flooding, heat waves, and drought. So in short, resilience encompasses community preparedness, response, and recovery efforts that include hazard mitigation and climate adaptation. So this resiliency sub-element has to identify goals, policies, and programs that the county will pursue during the 20-year planning cycle to equitably improve county resiliency to the impacts of climate change. And these actions must identify, protect, and enhance natural areas, identify, protect, and enhance community resiliency, so that includes social, economic, and built environment factors consistent with environmental justice. And these actions must address natural hazards that are created or aggravated by climate change. The sub-element also requires prioritizing actions that benefit overburdened communities that will disproportionately suffer from the compounding environmental impacts and natural hazards due to climate change. So we may have some existing policies, such as in the county's Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, that we can use as part of this sub-element. And so part of staff's work will be to review existing plans to confirm how we might add or enhance existing policies. So besides the two sub-elements, we also wanted to highlight just some of the key themes and other aspects of this piece of legislation. So as you may have picked up already in this presentation, environmental justice is one key concept that shows out throughout this climate bill. Environmental justice means the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people, regardless of race, color, national origin, or income with respect to development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies. Environmental justice includes addressing disproportionate environmental and health impacts in all laws, rules, and policies with environmental impacts by prioritizing vulnerable populations and overburdened communities, and the equitable distribution of resources and benefits. So legislative amendments to the land use element, for example, now require consideration of environmental justice in order to avoid worsening environmental health disparities. And in the transportation element of the Comprehensive Plan, multimodal level of service requirements have been added and are to help achieve environmental justice goals. Funding that's going to be available through the Department of Commerce, which we'll talk about a bit more later on in this presentation, also has an environmental justice component to it. Another concept in the legislation has to do with best available science and scientific credibility. The Department of Commerce will be issuing climate planning guidance. And the legislation states that any actions included in adjournance in a jurisdiction's climate element that are not specifically identified in Commerce's guidance may be included only if specific conditions are met. So for instance, in the greenhouse gas reduction sub-element, actions that a jurisdiction may add that aren't in Commerce's guidelines can only be considered if those actions are projected to achieve greenhouse gas emission reductions or per capita vehicle miles traveled reductions equivalent to what would be required of jurisdiction under guidelines by the department. And we would need to show that those those actions are based on scientifically credible projections and scenarios. And similarly, in the resiliency sub-element, any policies in there need to be consistent with best available science and scientifically credible climate projections and impact scenarios. The legislation also adds definitions to the Growth Management Act for the words listed here. So per capita vehicle miles traveled, active transportation, transportation system, environmental justice, active transportation facilities, green space, green infrastructure, wildland urban interface, overburdened community, and vulnerable populations. The legislation also adds SIPA appeal protections. This shows up in a few places. And we won't go into too much detail on this. But there are some protections from SIPA appeals that are outlined in the legislation. And as you probably gathered by now, this bill is quite comprehensive. And it also has requirements for other types of plans and programs, such as the Department of Ecology now has to create climate guidance for shoreline master programs. And then flood control and water system plans of certain types will also need to address climate in various ways after certain dates in the future. So the items listed on this slide won't necessarily affect the county's Comprehensive Plan update, but you could anticipate to see some of these items coming before you in the future based on this legislation. And the final item we wanted to highlight in the legislation is that there's an optional component where a county or city that has to submit a greenhouse gas reduction sub-element, that we have the option that we can submit this to the Department of Commerce for approval. And so if we decided to go in that pathway and the Department of Commerce approved the greenhouse gas reduction sub-element, it would then limit the type of appeals to the Growth Management Hearings Board on this sub-element of the Comprehensive Plan. If the county chose not to go with this pathway, then the Department of Commerce would not be involved in approving this sub-element. And the county's greenhouse gas reduction sub-element would be open to more types of appeals to the Growth Management Hearings Board. Okay, I think I might pause there. We do have a few more items to cover in the presentation, but maybe see if there are any questions at this time on the content covered so far.
So I have to tell you that first and foremost, all of my questions that I've written down have to do with funding and guidance. So I don't have any up until this point. Thank you for the detail, Sue. Did you have something?
I have a couple of things. What city specifically would fall under this planning? What was 6,000 population or greater? What cities would those be?
It means that the city of La Center and the town of Yarcolt will not be required to plan under this legislation. The other smaller cities, I know that the city of Woodland have opted to plan with Clark County, so they will be subject to this. But in Clark County, the town of Yarcolt and the city of La Center will be exempted because their population is less than 6,000.
You know, and I'm just struck by what a huge scope of work this is. And I know, I think in other venues, I have suggested it might be good to have a work group or pull together some expertise to help advise and, you know, interface with the community in moving this all forward. And I think even within that, I could see even sub-groups just related to what are different aspects of this to, you know, really formulate a good plan.
Yes, that is included in our presentation, and we will go over that with you. But the question is how and when. But we will go over that with you.
Yeah, just a, you know, quick comment. And kind of, you know, I would appreciate a little bit more exploration in the future on this when we talk about best available science. That scares me sometimes, quite frankly. Not scares me, but I think that we are creative and we can come up with good ways. And there are methods that come. I hear people testify at council meetings about actions that are being taken that are, can be considered somewhat experimental, but they're promising. But you wouldn't necessarily consider them as best available science. So I would appreciate exploring that because I'm a big fan of doing the most that we can with the least amount of resources available, the things that get the most bang for your buck. And so I don't want to limit. I want to be careful because also that can be used as a tool to prevent progress as well. But I just want to be careful that we're brainstorming, really thinking through things and not just acting autonomously, you know, according to what Commerce and the guidelines are.
You are correct. And that is going to be one area that we are going to be investigating. The way that the legislature is structured is that if we have sufficient data or other information, rather than relying on the guidance, we have the ability to submit that, to support whatever goal or target that we set. That's what they mean by best available science and deviating from Commerce. We've done that in the past where we have our own best information or in-house expertise to include that in any of the strategies or policies that we have, we bring before the council. That is how they're giving us that leeway not to rely on the guidance from Commerce.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Jenna. I think we're ready for funding and guidance unless Oliver's going to take that.
I'll let Jenna continue. And I think, as I mentioned to you last night or yesterday, that there will be funding for this project, but we don't know how because Commerce is trying to determine how that funding is going to be divided by counties and to the cities. One of the things that we all know that when this type of bill is passed, the legislature will always put a caveat that if there is no funding, this bill is not a void. But they provided funding, so we will know. But Jenna, go ahead.
Okay. So as Oliver was just saying, we are expecting funding from the Department of Commerce, but the exact amount, we don't know about yet. But we are expecting to learn that very soon, like any day. So we will let you all know once we know what we'll be eligible for. The Department of Commerce is also establishing a grant program that's required under this legislation to advance participation of vulnerable populations and overburdened communities in the planning process. And our understanding of the bill is that this funding is going to be directly between the Department of Commerce and community organizations. So the county won't be involved as part of that funding stream, but it possibly could be funds that go to organizations in our community. So the legislation also directs the Department of Commerce to create guidance to support local jurisdictions in updating their Comprehensive Plan to include the climate element. And it gets a little bit confusing because of the timing of the county's Comprehensive Plan update. So intermediate guidance that reflects this new law is due by December 31st, 2023, to be used by the 2025 Periodic Review Jurisdictions, such as Clark County. The legislation also directs Commerce to go through a whole rulemaking process based on the law, but that's not due until 2025. And so that final rulemaking process is not expected to impact Clark County's Comprehensive Plan update that's due in 2025. So we'll be going off of the guidance that we expect to see by the end of this year. In the meantime, the Department of Commerce has been working on climate planning legislation that's, it's based on a previous legislative budget proviso regarding optional climate elements. So this was underway well before this legislation passed. But this guidance is going to be available in two days, on June 30th. And through informal conversations with Commerce staff, our understanding is much of what's in this guidance that's about to come out is still going to be applicable to the guidance we expect to see at the end of the year. So it's a good indicator of what what we're expecting to see in the guidance by year's end. So based on that, and we've seen staff have reviewed draft version of that guidance that's about to come out. And so based on what's in there, Department of Commerce is, you know, they suggest best practices and ideas related to process. They also provide a climate, a model climate element in that guidance. And also provide over 200 sample measures that could potentially become a Comprehensive Plan goal or policy. So the spreadsheet snapshot on the slide, which I know you can't read, but it's here to illustrate that Commerce has developed a very large table with over 200 example measures. And then there's a lot of supporting information related to each of those ideas. The Department of Commerce has also compiled a climate resource guide that has additional climate-related information. So the main point here is that as the county begins this work, we do have a lot of access to resources and information coming directly from the state, but also other places as well. And related to that, we just wanted to touch on some examples of what, you know, other jurisdictions have done related to climate planning. So there's a lot of existing examples of climate plans, both inside and outside of Washington State. In 2022, the Vancouver City Council, for instance, adopted a climate action framework. They're the only city in the county with an adopted climate plan that staff is aware of. For the 2025 Periodic Review Jurisdictions, including Skagit, Thurston, and Watcom County, they, these other counties all have some type of climate or sustainability plan. So those jurisdictions will need to review what they already have and revise them or integrate them into their Comprehensive Plans to meet the legislative requirements in this bill. Whereas Clark County will be designing our climate element in line with the legislation from the start, but also have the opportunity to learn from these other jurisdictions that have already done some climate planning work. There is also a link on this slide to the MRSC website, which has a nice repository of climate-related plans from jurisdictions across the state. Okay, so we want to wrap up by discussing the timeline tied to this work and also discuss how this, this climate work is going to integrate with the rest of the Comprehensive Plan update. And before we even look at specific dates, we just want to note that due to the nature of climate cutting across, you know, many different topics and sectors, that staff has a lot of organization and coordination to do. And while we haven't figured out all of these details yet, we will be mapping out an approach to do this as well as we can. So a few things we do know. We know that our approach will need to include collaboration across many county departments. So we've already started talking with public health and public work staff, but there are other departments beyond that that we are going to need to coordinate with. We know that this work has to be conducted in partnership with many external organizations and individuals. And we know that our public engagement needs to be consistent with the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review Public Participation Plan, which, as you all may recall, you approved earlier this year. So we'll likely come back to council with some kind of proposed climate public engagement approach for your review that would supplement the existing 2025 Comprehensive Plan Public Participation Plan. Okay, so let's look at the actual timeline. So today is June 28th, and this is essentially kicking off the county's work on the climate element. And starting now through the end of the year, project initiation work will focus on applying for funding from the Department of Commerce as soon as it's available, possibly setting up an inter-local agreement with some of the cities if they are interested in collaborating on pieces of this work, and going through the contracting process to hire consultants to support staff with this work. So we will be back in front of you as agreements and contracts are ready for your review and consideration. We also plan to form at least one climate policy advisory team, though we have a lot of details to figure out in terms of what that's going to look like or how many groups or subgroups we might need. And by the end of the year, we will have mapped out our And by the end of the year, we will have mapped out our public engagement plan and also should have in hand the guidance from the Department of Commerce that we are expected to use as a resource for this work. Moving into 2024, this is when the bulk of the project work is expected to happen. So this is when the public is going to help shape the, what this plan looks like, staff are going to begin drafting it, and by the end of the year, we would expect to have a draft version of a climate element. It's going to involve a lot of feedback from a lot of people, and we'll need to implement a process that really helps us do that well. And then in 2025, this is when final revisions will be taking place on the climate element, and the adoption process will happen. And so the climate element will go through the adoption process as part of the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update. Okay, so that's all the slides we have to share, and we are glad to answer other questions that you might have.
So I do want to get to any additional public comments as quickly as we can, but I do have some questions on the funding and guidance aspects, all related to what Counselor Marshall was asking. And what you just brought up as far as an advisory team, as far as timing, so we're going to relate all these questions together. Obviously, we had some comments by Mr. Sankey during Board of Health, which would have been really relevant to this work session, but we don't take public comment during the work session, and we always have confusion and misuse of our public comment time. But as far as funding and guidance, you know, we'll wait for the guidance, it'll come. But we have so much available capacity and guidance out in the community, really substantive and good ideas. So I'm hopeful, and that was the question, that we'll have planned open houses, a mechanism to tap into the public on all these issues, because a lot of this is going to be beyond the capacity of staff. And then I saw the Climate Action Team, and I'm hopeful that will be an entity. I don't know how big that will be or when you're going to start recruiting. I certainly encourage the earlier the better to get that up and running. And so all that in consideration, you know, it's always so scary when you see legislation that says this is null and void if we don't pay, you know, have, pay for it, and certainly that's a WASAC mantra that we don't want unfunded mandates, so I get that part of it. What are we going to need in the interim for resourcing? I mean, obviously, we should tap into the community, expertise that's out there, but as far as your staffing, are you sufficiently staffing to meet what we're confronting right now with this additional planning?
Thank you, Counselor Medveigh. I am working to put a team, when I say team, internal team, that will comprise staff from public health, public works, ROTC, POGs, those will be what I will call our technical internal staff to help us in the work, because this will touch so many departments and so many programs. The outside team, we will put out at some point as quickly as possible a press release, because I know that there is a lot of interest out there on this particular issue, as I indicated earlier. I can't say in the past 10 years or five years, but I can say yes. Every time this bill will come up, it wouldn't pass. Every time it will come up at the legislature, it wouldn't pass, and people have been pushing for it, so many people with different interests. So we'll put out a press release locally here of folks that may be interested, and then through that, we will work with the county manager and the council to, through that press release, select a technical advisory group, some folks, I don't know yet, but folks that have expertise in the climate realm. This is going to be in a form of goals and strategies, you know, so we will work with folks that have interest in that and help us to come up with what those goals, target, and strategies are going to be, because it is something that hence you said, the benchmark, you started to be monitoring them over time to see how well you're doing. So that is the step that we will be taking. I don't have the internal resources. Jenna here is very good in area of expertise, and will be leading the work, but I will be overseeing that and providing guidance as we move forward. The issue for us is that of timing, because there is a very short window. When I was participating at the WASAC, I pushed to see whether it will be extended because we are the 2025 adopters. The legislature didn't do that through WASAC, to, because the timing here, as you can see, is just very short. The guidance will not come out until December of 2023, and then you have one year to complete the work. And then the adoption is June 30, which is only six months into the year. So we have a very tight timeline. We will do our best to accommodate that. The only thing that, there is also, I know Jenna didn't touch upon this, but there is a provision in the legislature that dealing with hazardous mitigation plan, this will involve our risk management, CRESSA and others, they do have mitigation plan. I don't know how update that is. There is a provision in the legislature that we can ask for extension to complete our mitigation plan. So if the current plan that come out through CRESSA and Public Works and others is current, we can use that. If it's not, we will wait until that is updated. The extension goes to 2027. Am I correct, Sonia, Jenna?
Yeah, that's right. There's a few sort of details we need to check if it'll be an option for us, but right, there's a possibility for the resilience sub-element due date to possibly be extended.
Let me go to the other councillors and see if they have additional questions, but I'd certainly encourage, within our own resources, tapping into the community, to voluntarily move forward even in advance as much as we can to comply with the legislation and planning in advance of that guidance, in advance of that funding, within our capability.
Yes, and I think what I picked up when I spoke with Commerce staff, thank you, councilors, is that any work that we do now, beginning July 1, they will reimburse us. That's what they told me. And as I mentioned yesterday, I'm working with them to the best that I can, irrespective of the fact that they got the order from the growth board, but I'm working with them to make sure that we are not penalized for whatever reason. So they assure me that if we start July 1, and we do get funding, that they will reimburse us for any work we started in July 1. So I'm working very hard to kick this off and proceed.
Super. Glenn, did you have something?
Yes, kind of to build upon what you said as far as involving the public, I think there's a good way to go about this change and there's a bad way. I just want to express that, you know, this is an issue that is often polarized, climate change, and I think it's important that we as a community come together to tackle this challenge. And typically, what I've seen is kind of a war between advocates of climate change action and other industries, and I don't want it to be that way, should not be that way, cannot be that way, if we're going to have the best plan that we possibly can. So one of the things that I highly encourage is to, I think many times we're prone to going to groups, different groups, and saying, look, this is what we decided, what do you think? And then they provide comment, and then we kind of move ahead. I'd like to be a little more proactive than that and say, you know, go to groups such, I'll use a group that I'm familiar with, being that I'm a general contractor, so the building industry. You know, let's go to the building industry and say, this is what we have to accomplish. These are the different ways that we think that we can get there. Please help us select the least impactful way to get there, you know, to accomplish what it is that we need to get. Involve them so that they can use their expertise to guide and steer our direction on this as opposed to just kind of going to them and asking them for feedback after we've already pretty much made the decision. I think if we are able to do that, and it's going to be complicated, it's hard, and I know that we're strained for resources on this, there's no question about it, but I think that we will accomplish a lot more as a community if we're able to work together in that fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Oliver and Jenna, for this presentation. It's really helpful. One thing that you mentioned is the possibility for Commerce review and approval of the greenhouse gas reduction sub-element. Could you talk about that a little bit more, and when might that decision be made by the council if that's the route we want to go? What's kind of a pro and con on that?
I will encourage, when we have one, to have Commerce review that. I think it's to their benefit. It lessens the opportunity for appeal. If we go the other route, we will, that could be subject to an appeal, but if we submit that sub-element to Commerce and they approve it, you know, they will provide opportunity for folks to comment on it, and then finally, you know, they have expertise as well. It may not reside in Department of Commerce, Ecology, other state departments will have to review that and give their okay. So that would be the route that I would recommend to council when we have that sub-element.
Great. And is it that, just that sub-element that we have that opportunity to have that interaction with?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, it looks like that concludes the work session. Thank you. You have a lot of work, well, the whole entirety of the county, so I do appreciate the fact that you're putting together this technical team from all of our stakeholders within the county itself internally. So Jenna, thank you. Oliver, thank you. Anything, any last comments?
No, thank you, councilors. I share your observation. We have a lot to work on. Thank you, councilors.
All right, so the work session is adjourned. We're going to slide right into our council time agenda. We have public